Good evening and welcome to the November 3, 2025, meeting of the City Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Scott Loikitz. I'm the zoning board chair. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with New Jersey statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this special meeting has been provided to a newspaper record that's been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube page, also broadcast on Summit's government channels, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. Transcript of this meeting is also being taken using audio and video, so we need all speakers to utilize one of the microphones in the room. Please note that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. City has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs the hearing assistance, please obtain the system and return it thereafter. Ms. Sands, can you please call the roll of members?
Place chairs on.
Here.
Mr. Yuko.
Here.
Mr. Malay.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Mr. Curran.
Here.
Ms. Chiefo is excused. Mr. Feskins.
Here.
Mr. Chanchuli.
Here.
Mr. Neering.
Here.
Chairman Loikitz.
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you, Jessica. Andy Ball is the zoning board's attorney. Mr. Ball advises the board members on matters of law and is the key interface with the applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on these applications. Jessica Sands is a city employee. She's the zoning board secretary. Board secretary works with the applicants on preparing their applications, planning our agendas, and keeping our meeting minutes. The board secretary also does not vote on these applications. Also present are experts who are hired annually by the board to provide input. Tonight, we have Marie Raffa from Colliers Engineering. Also present is Ed Snikus from Burgess Associates, and he's our board planner. These experts are seated at the table to the right of the board, the public's left. They also do not vote.
We vote.
Nobody else does. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Before we enter into executive session to vote on the application, you'll be advised on how many votes are required. Each case will begin with their applicants and/or their attorney giving an overview of the application process to date and the variances that are required. We then hear from any additional expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why those variances are needed. The board experts, followed then by the board members, may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and their expert witnesses. Due to recent cases running excessively long, we strongly encourage applicants and their experts to give brief and concise testimony, so we may get to as many cases as possible in a given evening. Once the board members and the board professionals have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about the case. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Please be careful as how you phrase your questions. They should not be proceeded with a statement about the case, but should be a direct question of the witness. Also, before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, provide your address. It is critically important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the audience have their second opportunity to speak, and that's the time when you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed. We enter into executive session. This is where the board members discuss the case and then vote. You'll be able to listen in on our executive session, normally not allowed to participate. I ask that each applicant and their attorney at present come up and give a brief synopsis of the anticipated testimony tonight, including the number of witnesses and whether or not they can finish their presentation within 30 minutes. Before we get to the cases we're going to listen to tonight, we're going to do a little bit of housekeeping. Resolution of extension for 226 Hobart?
Yep.
Okay.
So I know I had circulated. We received a request from the applicants by way of correspondence. I know they're here this evening in case there's any questions, but the scope of the application has been reduced as compared to the original approval. I know one of the variances that was granted is being abandoned as part of this request for extension. I'll also just note that, keep in mind, when this application was approved, it was subject to our one-year approval timeframe. Obviously, the board has since gone to a two-year approval timeframe, and I do believe this is the third request for an extension at this point. So if there's any questions from the board, I can answer anything, or I know the applicants are here to answer any questions that you may have of them.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, can I get a motion to approve the resolution of extension?
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Jessica, can you call the roll, please?
Place chairs on.
Yes.
Mr. Yuko.
I'm going to recuse on this vote.
Mr. Malay.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Feskins.
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli.
Yes.
Chairman Loikitz.
Yes.
Wait, was Mr. Chanchuli allowed to vote, or does recuse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great. Resolution of extension has been granted. We'll see you in the future. All right. First up tonight, can we have representatives from 13 Huntley Road?
Good evening. Samantha Alfonso of Alfonso and Weber on behalf of the applicants, and hopefully less than 30 minutes, but 30 to 45 minutes.
Any witnesses?
We have two witnesses, one direct, two direct witnesses potentially. If you want to hear from the architect, we have him available as well.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. We'll be with you shortly.
Thank you.
Is anyone here from 221 Blackburn? Please, come on up.
Daniel Dubinette, architect.
Hi, Daniel.
Hi. So, yes, we could definitely do this very quickly.
And just you and your clients?
Myself and the clients, yeah.
Will be the witnesses tonight? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. That was for 221 Blackburn?
Oh, I apologize. I.
Oh, you skipped ahead?
I skipped.
So, we'll just note briefly, 221 Blackburn, in case anyone's here for that or is watching for that, they had a defect in the notice, so we will not be able to hear that application this evening. It will be renotice properly.
Excellent.
And so you are here for?
For Kent.
190.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right.
10, yeah, 10, 15 minutes.
Perfect. So we'll see you shortly. And then finally, 23 Oxbow, please. Double duty tonight.
Yes, and we have two witnesses.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sam. All right. So why don't we hear from 13 Huntley Road? Yeah, come on up. Just make sure you speak into the microphone.
The property is located at 13 Huntley, as mentioned, from the rule. It's designated as block 3604, lot 13. This application really is to create a functional driveway. Right now, they really can't use it. It's, it's just the maneuverability isn't there. There's an existing 15-foot sanitary easement behind where the existing garage is that inhibits the extent that the property can really be improved. So they're seeking a variance for front-facing garage to redirect the existing garage to face forward. It would also require moving the driveway over to meet, obviously, the, the new front face of the garage. They also are looking to just do a little retaining wall in the back to create a step down with stormwater, of course. Okay. We also have a pre-existing non-conforming building coverage that was noted in the staff reports of 20.8%. I believe that it's because the landing wasn't included in the coverage at the time, based on emails that I found with Krista Anderson from back when the new, the home was first built. If the board has any questions of me, I'd be happy to take them at this time, or we could hear from.
Yeah, I, I think you answered. Just want to be sure. So that landing you're referring to, that's not something the current applicant did? That's something the prior owner built?
Correct. The prior owner, yes. And everything was approved. They had a full CO, so I understand any, you know, issues back then were resolved. They were at 20% building coverage at that time, but at that time, Krista did not include the landing in that calculation. And I have an email showing that, if you want to see it, with her explaining how it was calculated.
So then we probably should add a variance for that? Would you?
Yeah. Thank you.
It, it was constructed, I believe you have, in the application around 2020?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, so that, that's obviously not a pre-existing non-conformity as compared to the code, so we should treat it as a variance.
Yeah, included.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Alfonso? Okay.
Thank you.
Your first witness, please.
Thank you. I have the applicants here. If you could please state your name and address and spell your last name.
I'll just have you each sworn in. If you could both raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And one at a time, please state your name, spell your last name.
James Lee, L-E-E.
Yin-Yun Luan, L-U-A-N.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so you're the owners of the property, and when did you buy it?
Yeah, so we purchased the property back in March of this year. When we saw the property, we fell in love with the neighborhood. It's very quiet, very convenient. You know, we moved only a few towns over, but we knew Summit really well at that point, you know, before we moved in. The one big issue we saw right away because the previous owners parked their cars in the garage, and they had smaller cars. They had like a, like a Mini Cooper or something small, and then a Tesla, the smaller model. One of them had to be slanted kind of sideways a little bit. It wasn't a perfect 90-degree angle in, and the other one was like shoved into the corner, and that's how they were able to fit two cars into the garage. So we tried to do that when we eventually moved in, and it was 15 maneuvers in, 15 maneuvers out, you know, and that's watching to make sure I don't slam into the side of the garage door or the retaining wall, because there was really no space to fit two cars in. So, so what, as a result, we ended up just putting one car into the garage, my car, because I have to charge my car. My wife's newer car has to be outside because it's an SUV. It's even harder to maneuver. So that's the situation.
Thank you. And did you have a chance to review the administrative reports, the staff reports?
Yes.
And you agree to be bound by those comments, subject to any comments from your professionals?
Yes.
Did you talk to your neighbors as well?
Yeah, I met like with all the neighbors that were around. I actually stopped by some of the neighbors that I couldn't catch. Tried to catch them again, but no one, you know, they were not around. So talked to overall probably five to 10 neighbors in the vicinity, and they all were supportive of, you know, us fixing this issue because, you know, they've seen the house get built and they know the issues, you know, just by looking at it for all these years before we moved in.
Great. Any questions from our board experts for these witnesses?
No, not for this one.
Do you have any other witnesses for this?
I do.
Okay. All right. Good enough. Thank you. I just wanted to add some technical questions to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions for the advocates? Seeing none? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Well, one second. Any questions from the public for these witnesses? Seeing none? Okay, sorry.
No, my, I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Andrew Clark, C-L-A-R-K-E.
And I'll note for the record, you've appeared before us a number of times. Very recently, any changes to your credentials since the last time you were here?
No changes.
I imagine we'll accept you back once again.
Hundred percent. Welcome back, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'll jump right in.
Do you want me to, I have your plans up here, too?
Yeah, you can leave it up there, but I'll just make reference to the board as well, since it's here. I'm making reference to the lot grading plan prepared for this project dated June 26, 2025. I prepared this plan. I conducted the survey as well as the proposed grading plan. Brief description of the existing conditions, just so that those are clear. As was indicated previously, this house was constructed, work done, finished up around 2020, I believe. At the time, they constructed the driveway, which is on the existing conditions on the left side of my drawing. The driveway is a side-load garage, because obviously they were advancing a conforming plans that would meet the ordinance, and the side-load garage does that. However, the 15-foot easement that's at the top of that, of the page there limits some of the work that could occur on that part of the property. As a result, the, the wall that they built where this brick drive area is, right outside the garage doors currently in the existing condition, is only about 19 feet from the face of the garage. So when I, whenever I do a side-load garage, and in most towns, they actually stipulate in ordinance what that minimum distance behind the garage is, I use 24 feet as a minimum. That's pretty standard drive aisle in a parking lot, and also applies to pulling in and out of a garage. So this is six feet short of that, which means you automatically have a maneuvering issue. In addition, the way the driveway was aligned is it comes straight along the, the face of the garage. So that makes it so if you're pulling up and the garage face is right there, you really can't just pull into the garage. You would have to do a series of maneuvers just to get into the garage the way the driveway is aligned. So it's very easy to see, even just on paper and thinking about it practically, that, that it's not a functional garage in, in the modern sense. So these owners took a look and, and discussed with their architect, and there is a possibility with relatively minimal effort. It's not, you know, they're not rebuilding the garage, but what they're going to do is close up the door and introduce a door that faces on Dayton Road in order to make a functional garage with a driveway that comes straight out, and they can pull in and out of the garage directly. I think that, that works very well in this application and on this site and in this neighborhood, because it is a relatively low-traffic neighborhood, so pulling in and out of the, the driveway in this manner shouldn't be problematic from a traffic standpoint at all. If you drive the neighborhood a little bit along Huntley, there's probably like, for all those houses that have attached garages, they're front-facing, and there's about nine of them, eight or nine of them. The other ones either have detached garages or no garage at all. Just up the road, there's another road, Milton, that cuts across. It's, you know, 150 feet away is where the street starts from where we are, and I drove down that road as well, because it's, also gives context in the neighborhood. There's about a dozen houses on that street that are front-facing garages. So this is not an uncommon thing to see in this neighborhood. Now, granted, some of those may be of the lot width that allows for the front-facing garage, but the point I would make is that it's not an uncharacteristic thing to see in the neighborhood. So it's not like this would be the only house that looks that way. To effect this change, you, you would put the garage door facing Dayton, pull the driveway straight out, and then the section of driveway that is existing currently between what's labeled as the brick drive and is labeled as paved drive, that pavement and brick apron would be removed and replaced with landscaping, lawn, I imagine, perhaps some plantings if they want to add a little bit of screening for their, for their, what will become the patio. So the brick drive outside the existing garage doors would, they're planning to have that remain and use that as an outdoor space, a patio for, for outdoor use. The area just behind the existing brick pave, paver patio that's in the back, what we're planning to do is just frame that area a little bit with a three-foot-high wall and just level it a bit. It starts to slope off towards the easement in the back, and it's kind of the only sort of yard area that they have, as limited as it is, but they wanted to just flatten a little bit of it, and so that's what the introduction of the wall is in the back there. Doesn't require variance relief. It will disturb a bit of the steep slope area, but that area of steep slopes in the back totals 850 square feet, and we're going to disturb slightly more than half of that by introducing this wall and leveling that area. So about 450 square feet, which is within the threshold of Summit's waiver for steep slope disturbance. And, and, and the other areas of steep slope in the front up on Huntley are not going to be disturbed at all as part of this project. The change in lot coverage, it's about 160 square feet of new pavement, so it's underneath a 300-square-foot threshold, triggering new stormwater management. There is an existing dry well. That's what's shown in the existing condition with the manhole that's in this, well, it started out as a turnaround area and then was restored to grass. But there, the manhole cover is there. I checked. That is the dry well, so that was obviously installed as part of the project that was done previously for stormwater management. The roof leaders, certainly along the Dayton Road frontage, appear to connect to that. They go below ground, and then there is the dry well there, so I'm assuming they're connected to the dry well. They're not discharged at grade. And so we're not adding any new stormwater management measures, but I think, given the conditions on this property, I don't anticipate that very minor increase in coverage to have any impact. Certainly, anything that would be flowing this way, we're going to take some of the pavement out and add grass, so there'll be a layer of grass in between the new driveway and the concrete wall that exists there now. So that'll actually improve that runoff characteristic in that location. Anything on the brick drive that's here isn't causing a problem now. There's no signs out in the field of stress from stormwater management. The owner said they haven't experienced any sort of conditions or had any complaints. So I, I feel confident that the stormwater management, as it is today with regards to the project that was already done, is adequate for the site and that there are no problems, and we're not going to contribute anything that will increase that. There was a mention of the building coverage, so the building coverage is 0.8 above what's permitted technically, and that's, look, when I go out and do a survey, I start fresh. I survey, I make my survey, I start fresh. I survey, I make my measurements, and then I do my assessment of the zoning, and, and, and I report those numbers. In this case, the 2,065, 2,065 square feet is above the 1986 that's permitted. Now, the 65 square feet that I'm classifying as a deck, which technically meets the, the definitions in Summit's ordinance for building coverage because it's more than a foot above ground, is this three-by-16-foot landing that's in the back that I have labeled as a deck and the stairs that go down to the patio. Again, there was some discussion in earlier email chains about that with Krista. So I don't think that deck was included. If you, if you take that as, as the condition and say, okay, well, then there's 2,000 square feet, we're 14 square feet over what's permitted, I would attribute that to, I'd say, difference in measurement and probably the difference between the foundation and the skin of the dwelling. So when I do a survey, I go to the, the, the skin of the dwelling as best I can assess, depending on how consistent it is. I take the outside of the siding versus the foundation. A lot of times when you're doing a new house or dwelling, you're working off the architectural plans, you're using the foundation dimensions. And, and that difference between the foundation and the skin varies, can be almost the same, or it can be two inches or three inches different on older, you know, packed-out skin. In this case, the 14 square feet that is different amounts to about 3/4-inch difference between the foundation and the siding, if you were to look at it that way, over the 215 square foot or linear foot of perimeter. So that's just a little background where I think that came from. Again, it's a de minimis. It doesn't really change the, the impact or the feel of the house for any passersby or, or residents, but it is a little bit over what's permitted. I think that's the general summary of what, I don't want to overcomplicate this. It's a fairly straightforward situation. We have the hardship in that the garage doesn't function, and I think that this improvement will be a very welcome improvement. It will make that garage functional and won't stand out or be out of character with the neighborhood at all.
Great. Thank you.
So with that, I could take questions or go to the comments first.
Questions from this?
Okay. Just some quick questions.
Sure.
With regard to the easements, what, the easement area, I'm sorry, the 15-foot easement, what's the limitations of that easement? It's both a sanitary and a drainage?
Well, that's how it's shown on, on the plans and in the deed. That's right. So, I mean, it's a little unusual in that there's some mature trees in there. Usually, when you have sewers running underground, you don't really want those trees, but...
I thought that was unique, yeah.
But...
Some 24-inch trees.
But they're there. But there's also, in those cases, I often suspect, and I'm not sure if the easement's actually being used, but in this case, we do have hardware and manholes and covers that are there would indicate that there is in fact use of that easement.
So in order to improve the driveway condition, you would have to go into that easement?
Correct.
You said you're shy about six feet on just a maneuvering.
That's correct.
But not only that, it's also the alignment of the driveway as well.
Yes, yes.
Because the driveway comes in.
It's not at right angle to the street. That's right.
To the building, so.
So that adds to it, yeah.
Component to that. This is also a corner lot, which I think is unique in a sense that's...
I agree.
That you're providing, it's only fronting one side of that, the frontage of the property.
That's right. And, and the front door addresses Huntley, so, so it's not on the front door side of the property.
Okay. Any tree removals as a result?
There's no tree removal scheduled. There, there are some arborvities that are, that are sort of in a line right where I'm indicating along the Dayton frontage. So those will have to come out. We, we discussed that in terms of screening, and, and they're certainly agreeable to adding back that screening. It may actually be more, believe it or not, more cost-effective to just plant new ones because these aren't that old and they're not that tall yet. By the time you transplant some of them, sometimes they die, and it doesn't end up working out that well, but...
You had mentioned, you addressed Dayton Road, and Dayton Road, as I see it, comes into a T-intersection right at this property. Correct?
Very close.
It's not a through street, yes?
Correct, correct.
So therefore, you're coming to a stop line at that location?
That's right, at the Huntley and Dayton intersection. That's right.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Are there any changes to the, to the downspouts and the driveway location? Is there anything that's going to change about any of your changes?
No, I, I saw your comment. I double-checked that. I, I went back to the property today. The, the, if you're looking from Dayton, the right side of this garage, there's a downspout for the garage that goes straight down into the ground. So that shouldn't be altered, you know, if it gets damaged during the construction, we'll have to repair it, but it's going into the ground and into the dry well.
Okay, all right. I think that's all I have.
Yeah, the, the only other thing worth noting, I think, that you did bring up is your comment number 15 about the width of the curb cut.
Yes, yes.
The width of the curb cut is, in, in the proposed condition, about 23 and 1/2 feet. The existing curb cut, it's just worth noting, is about 22 and 1/2 feet. So it's nearly the same. The driveway is 20 feet, but we have just a little flare at the end just for that maneuvering in and out and the turning movement. So that would be a deviation from the permitted 18-foot curb cut.
So if possible, we would add that as a variance request.
Great. Board, questions for this witness?
Can you just recap the variances that are being requested?
Front-facing garage, and now, right, we discussed the 20.8% building coverage that's existing.
Right.
And 24-foot-wide driveway apron where 18 feet is the maximum permitted R6.
You said 22 and 1/2, 23, how's it 24?
Yeah, it's, it's 23 and 1/2 feet. So she was just rounding to 24. 22 and 1/2 is the existing curb cut that's there.
Just to confirm, 23 and 1/2 is what's being requested then?
Correct.
Okay.
Question. The driveway is limited to 18 feet with your proposed 24.
That, that's what we were just discussing, and we would like to, I'm sorry?
What about the curb cut?
Yeah, I, I thought the driveway was permitted to be 20 feet wide where the, where you have a front-facing garage. That's two cars. But, and then, and then there's a different criteria for the apron and the curb cut.
I just have one sort of housekeeping, record-keeping. I'm, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but it's just labeled differently on the plan. So in the existing and the proposed, you have a brick drive, right?
Right.
In the proposed, I'm assuming that that's what you're calling, is that what you're calling the side patio?
Correct, that's correct, yeah. And, and, yeah, I, I maybe could have handled that slightly better in the labeling, but it effectively becomes a patio where it was a drive before without changing anything.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, it's, it's minor. I mean, in the new, proposed new driveway, that manhole is, looks to be right at the edge of the driveway. Is that going to be a problem or is that?
No, it shouldn't be a problem. You know, it's a, it's a full-size manhole cover, so it should be able to handle the traffic. They may have to reset it as, you know, with the driveway as they construct that, so it might need to be reset.
Okay. I mean, given where it is, it might not be driven over a lot, but, you know, it's, it's still technically in the driveway.
Yeah, but Summit now requires a full-blown metal manhole cover now for above dry well. So it's kind of set up for that now.
Okay.
Just, could your client live with an 18-foot-wide apron? I mean, I don't understand what, what the need, what's the need?
Well, the...
Or is it a want?
It's, the driveway's 20 feet, and then it's a, it's good practice to have just a little bit of a flare at the end. So that's, it's that flare at the very end that causes that, that wider cut.
So then just make it 20.
What's that?
Make it straight out.
I mean, you can make it straight out. You, you, you can make it straight out. I, I find what happens is, you know, that's where people hit their tires when they're pulling it out and...
The average person has to.
Knocks the curb out or knocks your tire out or both sometimes.
Or they just drive right over the grass. I have tire marks on that.
Mr. Clark, do you know if there's any other driveways on Huntley or Dayton that have that flare out? Do you remember from your digital survey?
I don't remember. I actually didn't pay attention to that aspect when I was driving around.
Okay. But it's not an uncommon condition in Summit to have the flare?
No.
Okay.
No.
They don't require variances. So, no, I had to get a variance for a wider driveway with a wider apron, but I didn't go over 20.
Yeah, I mean, you know...
Yeah, I'm not sure if they got one in 2020 when they did that approval or not. It didn't look like, but I'm not sure if that was one of the new ordinances as well. I don't recall.
Anyone else? Questions from the public for this witness? Seeing none.
Thank you. Unless the board wants to hear from the architect, we, I think we can...
No, I don't think we need to. Do we? No, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. Then we can close and submit the application, if you would.
Great. Thank you. Any comments, public comments at this time for this application? Seeing none. Okay. Mr. Ball, what do we have in terms of our votes and conditions?
So we're only dealing with C variances. Four votes are required to approve. I only have our usual condition, which is compliance with those conditions noted in the Board Engineers memorandum. The only, out of the ordinary thing is the additional variances beyond what we originally came in that we have just discussed here.
Okay, great. Who would like to open up executive session?
I'll start.
Please.
I think it's a reasonable request. The garage has been testified to, and visually, it's, it's, it's very hard to get in and out. I can see that just visually looking and hearing your testimony made that even clearer. And the front-facing garage, it has been noted, and visually, I could see it walk in the neighborhood, it's not an unusual thing in the neighborhoods. I'm not troubled by that. The building coverage is existing, and it's, it's not a huge variance, but it is existing. So it's not, that's not changing. And the driveway apron, you know, I mean, the driveway apron, I think it's a reasonable request. I agree with the issues. I know I've had problems going in and out of driveways without aprons. It's very much easier, you can do a easier turn in, so I'm, I'm not troubled by it. We may want to consider, you know, what are Summit's rules on that, and maybe that's something we might want to make a recommendation on at some point, but I'm not troubled by that either. So I, I could vote in favor of it.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Anyone else?
I can also support this. I think that, you know, just the, the, obviously, the driveway, the access to the garage right now is not functional. And there are, the way, the hardship is that you really can't extend, extend the driveway further back because of that sewer line. I think that's, you know, very critical to this application. And then add to that, not so much a hardship, but just an existing condition, is that there are two fronts. So it is difficult to find a place to put this driveway in the back of the house. There's, you know, it's, you kind of, you're between a rock and a hard space with those two conditions of having two fronts and then having the sewer line. So I think it's a reasonable request, and I can support it.
I, I agree with my colleagues. I, what I like about this application is they're moving their driveway away from the neighbor's property line, away from the easement, which seems to me to be empirically safer, you would think, not causing any issues like potential flooding or whatever else. Having an, an active driveway next to a sewer easement might cause, and, you know, I, I think the other variances are de minimis, as Ms. Alfonso stated. So I, I can fully support this. All right. With that, can I get a motion? Yes. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jessica.
Place chairs on?
Yes.
Mr. Yucco?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Chairman Leickis?
Yes.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
190 Kent Place Boulevard.
Absolutely.
Have them come and get sworn in and...
You could sit there.
Just give us a little quick overview, and then your architect can do the heavy lifting.
Sure. All right. So whoever's testifying, if you could please raise your right hand. If you're both, that's fine. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And one at a time, please state your name, spell your last name.
Jordan Glassberg, G.L.A.S.S.B.E.R.G.
Radula Glassberg, G.L.A.S.S.B.E.R.G.
Thank you.
Why don't you just tell us a little bit about your project?
So we started, well, we bought this property about two years ago, 2023, August of 2023. And we originally had a different architect who designed the plans. We actually have been in front of this committee before for a variance for the plans. We got that approval, and we started construction. We did have some issues in communication with our prior architect. So post-starting, just starting construction, we, we parted ways, and since then, we have had Danny really help represent us. I will have Danny speak to the rest of like the technical details, but essentially what we're looking for is slight changes or modifications in the plans since then.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any questions for these witnesses? No? Any questions from the public for these witnesses? Seeing none. Move on to your next witness.
If you can raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Daniel Dubinett.
And just spell your last name for the right hand, please.
Thank you, sorry. D.U.B.I.N.E.T.T.
Thank you. And I know you've appeared before us relatively recently as well. Any changes to your credentials since the last time you were here?
No, no, still, still good. Thank you.
I imagine we'll accept you back once again.
We will. Welcome back.
Thank you so much. So as we were just gonna, this is an interesting case because after they started construction, I, I took on this job. And like any new chef, I guess, in the kitchen, I looked at the plans, and I said, oh, gee, I wish we could do this, that, and the other thing. So to do this, that, and the other thing requires us to be here tonight again. So the first application was about 15 months ago, August 2020, 2024. And so during construction, and I would like to show you why, I wanted to make some modifications to the plan, which requires us to be back here. And there's another component to this, which does not need a variance, but I do want to, through my presentation, just show you some other modifications I want to do because 2024, in August, we were approved for a, a style of architecture or some little details that I'd like to change. So just to clear the air and, and not to have any confusion moving forward, I'd like to show you some other modifications that do not require variance, but because you are approving a variance that you saw, now it's slightly a little different, I'd like to run through that. So basically, I think the, I think the underlying overriding restrictive piece of this puzzle is that the lot is 60 feet wide in the R15 zone, which requires 90 feet wide. So there's an existing non-conforming sideyard setback at 8.2 feet, and this project, we'd like to extend this house a little bit and keep it at the 8.2 feet. And so there's a variance for that, and that also is the combined sideyard setback, same thing, existing non-conforming, that we would like to ask that we keep that existing non-conformity. And the third part of this is the generator, which requires 10 feet sideyard setback, and we're asking for five. And I guess I would like to show you just through some photographs and images that this probably is the better place for it anyway. So that being said, let me take you through the exhibits. Of course, lot size is not a problem. It's, again, it's the width, and we can see that in some of the sightlines. It's, again, it's the width and we can see that in some of the sightlines. What's interesting to note is the neighbor that would potentially have, well, has the generator five feet off the property line is the one to the right on this slide here. And because the house is so far set back, that if we put the generator in the back of the house conforming, it might be worse, obviously for the Glasbergs, but potentially a worse spot for the adjacent neighbor. So I think that's, the deviation could be acceptable.
So just want to interrupt for one second.
Yes.
The image that you're showing, is this directly from the plans that were already?
No, thank you.
Okay. We'll just have to mark this electronic presentation as a one, and I'll ask that you please send that to Jessica to make sure we have it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Yes, that's the Glasbergs' house. And I'll show you, Google Earth did a little bit better job. So 190 Kent is ours. And the adjacent neighbor to the right, you can see how farther, farther set back they are from, from our house. Making the generator in the side yard somewhat palatable, I would imagine for 186 Kent. There's already, you'll see, I'll show you some slides, there's already really, really mature evergreen trees that are part of 186's property. And then the gigantic arborettes in the backyard are part of 190. So I'd like to show you that as well. And again, the two variants we're seeking, one is for side yard setback. 15 feet is the requirement, 8.2 is existing, 8.2 is proposed. It's a violation of 6.8 feet. Combined side yard setback, again, it's existing non-conforming, which doesn't change, and it's a violation of 5.5. So the more restrictive one is, is the minimum side yard at 15. The plan is to, there's already a covered porch, this, this dark, darker color, red color, has an existing column and roof on it. So that's the part of the house we'd like to enclose to make the kitchen better, and I'll show you that. And then the portion at the back that has the lighter pink, we'd like to propose a outdoor covered deck. And the previous application had an outdoor covered deck, just in a very odd part of the plan, I thought. So the changes, and I tried to show you basically existing, or I should say previously approved plans versus the, what's in front of you tonight. This is the lower level, which has the garage. So previously, on the left plan was the proposed covered patio, which was off of the mudroom behind the garage. And I thought that was a very odd place for a covered area for entertaining. So I propose a couple of things. A, this is just a plan change, but instead of the existing mudroom being this very large space, we proposed to eat into the existing garage a little bit, to be able to get a half bath, which we do not have on the main level. So a half bath, side entry mudroom. And again, this doesn't change the variance, but it was a change in the, from the plans that you saw. So that's, it was kind of hard to, I guess, see the other architects' plans and not want to make some changes. So that was the lower level. On the main level, this was the, I think, the bigger change. So the existing variance or design did not include this porch area. And so when we started to do the kitchen design, I, it was kind of unnatural to say, well, this will make such a better internal space, and it's already being covered. Can we maybe move the dining? There's no dining room, or I should say, there's no separate dining room, so it's a kitchen and, and dining area. You know, it's a split level house from left to right. So the main level is living room, kitchen, and then dining area. So by, by getting this internal space, it improves the plan dramatically, which I think will have very little or no negative impact to the neighbors. And then instead of putting the covered proposed patio off the mudroom, which I can't imagine someone navigating their way to go enjoy it, this would be a much better place to enjoy, and it would be right off the dining area. So that is why we're here tonight. And I would like to show you some other little modifications to the plan that, again, do not require variance, but I would like the board to be aware. In the previous application, I imagine somebody were on this case. The design of the exterior included, this is the front elevation. So the design of this was to, this is their existing roof line. The design was for curb appeal, to raise the roof line. And I think there was some conversation at the meeting about, well, you're going to leave the framing in there and take the, right, I don't know. So obviously, practicality wise, we're going to go through this expense and go through the trouble of creating the curb appeal, curb appeal, which I think is great. What we'd like to do is make that attic space usable, get rid of the existing framing, the existing rafters that are in here. And now, and I've checked the FAR, we're still way, 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 way under the FAR, but we'd like to add this to the project. So basically, create an attic space for them in this portion of it. And that equates to this shaded area. So again, because it's a split, we'll go up to the master bedroom suite, and then I'll have a set of staircase up to this unfinished attic space, which is, I've included in our calculations of FAR, we're still significantly under what's allowed. So again, no real change to the exterior, other than I think there was on testimony at the previous hearing that that space was not going to be used. We'd like to use it. Visually, on the front of the house, I'd like to go over some of the changes. And again, it doesn't trigger a variance, but because you saw it one way, and now I'm proposing another way, would be, this was what was proposed. Basically, it was going to be a dormer here for aesthetic reasons. And this cute, but troublesome area where the, this peak and this peak don't meet. So it's going to be a problem with snow, rain. And so part of my suggestion architecturally was to join these two. This way, we get, still get the aesthetic qualities of the two peaks, but we don't have any long-term issues with snow and create a problem there. So that is a change to what you had seen a year and a, year and a half ago about. And the other change that I suggest that we make is add this break in the roof line to create like a dormer look. So instead of trying to do that in the roof line of the attic that has no value, let's add it to the master bedroom suite. So now they have a gorgeous window. And so that was another architectural change I'd like to make to the plan. And looking at, this is our proposed rear elevation. So the proposal is to add this covered deck in the back, square off the kitchen. This is the side view, so this again is, is the ask to enclose this already covered area and add the porch. I have some three dimensional images to help depict the changes. This is what was previously approved in the, in the rear perspective. And so this is the proposal. So we'd like to fill in this porch. And instead of adding the covered area to the lower level, bring it to the right side. And I believe what makes, and I, and I have, if we need to see it, I have the previous application. But I would like to jump to, I think, the, the real essence of this application is these conditions of the site in the backyard. So this is looking at the rear of 190. And we have all these, I couldn't even tell you how tall they are, they're probably over 40 feet tall, mature arborettes. And then in the front of the house, facing the neighbor, is the fence, and then very mature evergreen trees that's on the neighbor's side. So very, very, very little, it's none, impacted the adjacent neighbor. But of course, a big gain for the Glasbergs in terms of functionality of the space that we're requesting. To, and then I just show, this is a picture I took not too long ago in October. This shows how the site is today. And we're kind of on, a little bit on pause to be able to enclose that piece and add the porch. That's our application.
And, and you took all these photographs?
I did. And this is what it looks like at the moment with, with the new roof line. And this obviously is the adjacent neighbor. So I think it fits in well to the streetscape and it's an enhancement. And I didn't see any negative impact by this application at all. And no trees will come down as a result, as a result of this as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board experts, what questions do you have for this witness?
Do you have engineering testimony at all?
I could speak to the engineering a bit, which is, as a result of the project, we're not covering enough lot coverage to necessarily need stormwater management. However, they have a very, very, very flat lot. And the neighbors on the either side are elevated a bit. So the Glasbergs hired an engineer to design the stormwater system that is going to take care of their water in their backyard. Because although when it rains, there's a pot, like a pond, and then after a couple of hours, it does dissipate. So I guess my testimony in terms of engineering would be, we're willing to do it, we want to do it, and mostly for the benefit of the Glasbergs. And anything that in terms of your comment need to be addressed, I would definitely have the engineer, civil engineer, address everything. So in terms of the percolation tests and the design of the system, we would like to design it and have it approved by, by the engineering department.
So it appears to me, do you know what the amount of additional impervious coverage is?
Yes. Yes. I believe I have that calculation. I do not have, well, it's in the lot coverage. I apologize. Thank you. So yeah, so here's the differential between the two.
The.
So I'm coming up with a difference of 403 square feet. Sorry?
That's based on V1, right?
I, I would say it's a lot coverage that he has right there, he just underlined.
Yes.
And I just, I think I just want to point out that the, what you're saying is the 145 square feet is from a different drawing and it has different numbers.
Right. So I'm just trying to, just trying to make sure I'm following it. I guess 400 square feet of additional impervious coverage does require stormwater mitigation.
Okay.
Which you have already, so I, I'm in agreement in that. I just don't, I just don't want anybody to think that it's optional because it's required.
Okay.
So with that said, some of the engineering drawings show an extensive kind of rainwater collection system. There's a cold tech chamber in the front yard. There's also a series of perforated pipes running throughout the rear yard. Plus a berm, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how this is all working, what's the purpose of the berm? Is that going to impact, you know, neighboring properties? Where is the water coming from that's going into the back drainage area versus the cold tech chamber in the front?
I, I can't, other than, I think at some point, they, they designed the system with a seepage pit. And then after some digging and percolation tests, that they abandoned the, the pit because it just wouldn't work. So then they came up with this elaborate underground piping system. I know that the Glasbergs are, A, not 100% satisfied with what they've gotten so far, and we're going to continue. I'd like to reach out to Andrew Clark, but maybe get some other expert advice on how to handle this stormwater management. But it'd be something we would 100% agree to and abide by.
So can we condition?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm hearing here, is our usual condition that stormwater management plans would be submitted to the board engineer for review and approval.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're off the hook.
Chair, would you ever change our section like usual?
Yes. Two years? Okay. Ed, you have questions?
Yes, a few questions. We had noted in our report that the grading plan seems to differ as far as the location of the patio or the covered porch area.
Yes.
At least between the two. Can you bring the two into alignment?
Absolutely. That was before me, the design, and then now we have to go back and update the design.
So for the record, we need to have that consistent.
Thank you. Yes.
It's noted that the property is a non-conforming lot width at 60 feet compared to 90 feet is being required, right? Any tree removal happening as a result of the proposed changes?
No.
Okay, just some planting changes, I would imagine, for the location of the generator on that side?
Yes, and I saw the, some comments about what to plant. So of course, boxwoods, which is just a generic shrub that I thought of, but Ivy, Barry, Holly's.
Ian Barry Holly?
Ian Barry Holly, thank you.
That would be a good substitution for that type of location. Okay. You had shown the covered porch in the back. The alignment of that covered porch, is there an architectural reason for why it is aligned the way it is, the dimensions that it is?
Yes.
Because it is going into that side yard setback?
Yes. Primarily, well, my, my dream is that the dining table is centered in the space. We've got two for cabinets on the left, two for cabinets on the right, and this magnificent set of sliding doors. So if that could be centered, great. So that's what drove that design.
Okay, so it's really just to match the interior design of the building?
Yes.
And then the roof design itself? What is the slope of the roof?
The slope is very, 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 very shallow, so much that, yeah, that we needed to do a metal roof.
Okay, so that'll have a metal roof, but coming off the, the rear of the house?
Yes.
And that likely would not be visible from the street, that slope of that roof?
Definitely not. And I don't think the neighbors would, would see it as well.
Because we do have a requirement, our design standards calling for like six on 12 roof pitches. But in this situation, it seems like that's off to the back of property as well.
Yes.
And then you mentioned some changes you're making to the dormers on the roof areas, but that's being repeated elsewhere in the building?
Yes, we, we dug the, that aesthetic look of the dormer on the front to give the master bedroom some special transit window and, and to break the roof line primarily. And then we'd like to do that at the rear of the house with the master bathroom. Thank you.
Oh, actually, one last question, sorry. You had mentioned 8.2 feet is your, part of your variances, but then the other side at 7.3 feet also doesn't comply, but that's not being changed on that side?
It's not being changed.
Just wanted to clarify that.
And I think previously, there was a variance for the covered porch
On that side?
On that side, so we've eliminated that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Questions from the board for this witness?
If you would, maybe you can remind me, at the time of the first application, a generator was not included, was it? So why not?
When we were original, because we weren't trying to build that corner in, so we didn't need to include the generator at that point.
The existing generator is behind that portion of the house. And so I think they were planning on having the entertaining on the lower level of the mudroom, and the generator was going to stay, but now it can't stay because that's what we.
I see.
Yes.
Yeah, the old location.
Yes.
And the other question, now we have a new set of drawings and design, do they supersede the previously approved ones? Or what's the legal status?
If we approve it tonight, yes. Yes, they would.
They would?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all my question. Thank you, that's all my question.
Any other questions?
Just a reminder, something about the peak in the front of the house that was discussed, I don't know if it was, is there a fire?
There was a weird, well, I think the plan was to leave the existing framing
Yep.
And then overframe. I mean, we'll give them the curb appeal, but then it just seems like that's a fire hazard. Why would you leave it?
It's a double.
And then it's like, all right, well, I'll remove the shingles and the paper, and then I said, well, why would you do all that? Let's just get rid of the, you know, let's use, like, you could use this space, and obviously, you know, we have the room, we have the FAR, and it doesn't change the curb appeal, why wouldn't we? So that, I think, your memory is this conversation, and I wasn't there, but the testimony from the architect was that I will, no, we're just going to overframe it. And so I would like to say that that's a bad idea.
Great.
I just got a question about the generator. Are generators allowed in the front yard? No.
In the side yard or rear?
The changing, I thought the front yard was permitted in certain areas.
In certain areas, for corner lots, things of that nature.
Do we need a variance for this rooftop, what's the roof, the nose and the bay at the back?
That's what I was wondering myself.
The other question I have, this is also for the board and for our experts here, is the existing AC unit that's within that setback?
Yes.
Do we need to, do we want to include that now? I just know there was an application on Essex above us for replacing an AC unit, but rather you not have to go through this again?
Should include it.
Thank you.
Getting back to the roof pitch issue, it's under our design standards. It talks about a single or two family house shall have a minimum roof pitch on six-on-12 for a minimum of 80% of the dwelling's roof coverage. Do you feel that this is more than 20% of the overall roof?
I don't think so.
Area?
I would say I could...
What is the pitch of this roof?
The pitch of this roof, I believe, is a three-on-12.
Okay.
So it kind of puts you at a place where you can't, well, you have, asphalt shingles don't work well, a rolled rubber roof, unattractive, so even though you're not going to see it, we're going to do a standing seam metal.
And three-on-12, is that the minimum building code allowable?
For asphalt, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's a shallow roof, obviously.
Is there a heat tracing in that roof?
No.
Okay.
No, we'll just do the guards, I forget what they call them, icebreakers, yeah.
Was the berm part of the original plan?
I don't know if you had a grading plan at your original application.
We didn't need one, so we didn't have it.
This drawing is a little confusing, this grading plan, because it's showing new stuff, but on the old, actually, the old plan.
Yeah.
So it...
It sounds like they're going to get a new civil engineer, so...
Yeah, we need...
Right, I know, but I do feel like this is, this whole presentation here is a little bit, a little bit unknown, and like, I, what is the purpose of the berm? Is this for aesthetic, or is it for stormwater management? Or, I don't know if that's for the homeowners or the architect?
So we originally went through this when we were applying for the permits for the prior variance, so I think what we would do is work with the civil engineer to make sure, like, we are redrawing these plans as well. This wasn't part of the variance.
It's just that this plan is showing, and I realize that we're putting it as a condition, but this plan is not, you know, typically, if you're going to show a drainage plan, you would be putting it on the new construction, and then there would be some explanation as to like what the berm is, because to me, the berm is very strange in your backyard. I mean, you have this huge, deep backyard that, you know, people can use, except there's, I know it's just a 12-inch berm, you can walk over it, but it's a little strange, so and even just, I just have to say, just note that like...
Thank you.
The patio, the new patio is not shown here in relation to the berm, like, we're looking at the generator and sort of the old footprint of the building. So it does make it a little bit, it does make it a little bit hard to, you know, talk about this plan holistically, just, I understand where, what your variances are.
Yes.
But it's just that this doesn't actually match, you know, the plan.
Yes.
My other question was about the sump pump pit that's on the side of the house.
Yeah, we don't know what that's for. We, it seems abandoned, the one that's on the left side of your property?
It is not connected, it's not plugged in. It's been there, it came with the house, so we're not sure what was the purpose of that to be perfected.
It seems like a neighbor's discharge is coming.
Seems that way, the ones on our left, 186. There's a pipe that looks, that comes in and discharges into our external sump pump. I don't know what the prior owner's conversation was around that.
Do you see water coming from it?
When it rains, yes.
Water's coming out of it, so the neighbor might have...
But the pump's not working, so it just, yeah.
Yeah, the neighbor might have to address.
Isn't that something that should be addressed, like...
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Yesterday?
Yeah, we're struggling to get an engineer, and I suggest we reach out to Andrew Clark, someone who could help us, because this is, obviously, the typical seepage pit design didn't work, and we need something else to handle this, so...
So are you saying this plan is null and void?
I don't know if, well, certainly, it's the concept that, you know, when, obviously, I had to come before the board and present a grading plan, so I had, since they had this designed and it, from an engineer, I used it, but I would like to testify that obviously, nothing get approved without approval from the engineering department. So if they're not happy with it, and they have questions and concerns, we'll take care
So just on this note about if this is, because it is actually, I think this is a sort of a big ask to not have this presented, because the, there's 400 square feet of impervious cover that have to be covered by the drainage, but it has to be more than that if you're also trying to cover the backyard and some things from the front yard, and then roof leaders and all of that, so I just want to make note of that, that it's not only 400 square feet that, you know, you're designing for, would you say that's correct?
Right, right, so, so she's exactly right. When we, when we asked for stormwater collection, you know, yes, you're required to collect 400 square feet or so.
Right, but now we're going to ask...
But if you're taking the whole house that's greater than 400 square feet, we don't want it to just bubble up out of the system, so...
Right.
We'd want the system sized for what's actually going into it.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I just had one more. So there's a, is it a fireplace in, on the enclosed porch?
Yes.
Not, not a fire pit, too?
A fireplace, which will build a wall and that will give Glassberg's privacy with on the deck, and then, so yes.
I wasn't sure if it was a grill or a fireplace. Thank you.
If I could follow up on that question? You don't look to enclose the outdoor?
No, we could testify that that would never...
That would have to be a condition.
Yes, yes.
Even a screened-in porch?
Yes, and we could definitely testify to that or have it...
A condition.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public for this witness? Seeing none?
I just, no, I just, in the plan, it did look like it was a screened-in porch. I'm not thinking about it. If you can just put the plans up again, it did look, so I just want to make sure that this is...
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, not the plan, the, in the...
Yeah, I think one nice thing would be the perspective view of the covered deck.
Okay, yeah. I think the one that was colored looked a little...
Yeah, I tried to just, yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you.
But that doesn't show the enclosed wall, fireplace?
The brick.
Oh, yeah, true.
Any public comments about this application? Yeah, go ahead.
I don't see any light down there. What's the light?
Just, I would say, well, ceiling fans, and I would think we're setting lighting on the covered porch part, the ceiling.
Nothing for the back doors or anything like that?
No, no, just the light, the ceiling.
Great. Is there anything you want to say in conclusion?
No, thank you for hearing us tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Ball, what do we have?
Before we get to conditions, I just want to confirm a couple of details. We talked about an additional variance for the air conditioning unit, the setback. What, what is the figure, the setback that's being requested there?
Of the existing AC unit?
What's proposed?
The proposed is five feet for the generator and new AC, but the...
One unit?
Oh, okay.
There's going to be two units there, one's existing, which if...
So that's the same as what, Ed, you had noted in your report, it's just the air conditioning unit will be located the same as the generator?
Yes.
It's according to what I'm just hearing, yes.
Okay.
So are you certain distance from the generator?
Yes.
Yeah. Are you going with one AC or two condensates?
Two units, two fans, yeah.
So having trouble reviewing all the plans?
Yeah, I think the...
Five-foot setback?
We'll definitely be putting the ACs on this side of the house. I guess they ripped out the AC unit because we're going to do a new, new mechanical, so we could make that to the five-foot setback.
And then I know, we also had the question of whether the low-slope roof area will be more than 20%. I believe you said it's not, but...
It's not, but I could run the calculation very quickly for us, just to be simple about it.
Off around a little close.
Well, let's say this is 60 feet. Also, if we take a bird's eye view of the roof plan. I'll take the front porch.
Right, the slope overlaps.
Got a little slope overlap. This is 1,926. 1,926 divided by?
403 divided by? 1, 2, 6. That still doesn't change?
No.
You're measuring it just on the floor, not where it actually comes, also the existing roof?
I did, I pulled it back into the dark color line, so it's close. It's close, I would say it's over 20%. 20% of that number is 385, and this would be 403.
So if that's the case, then you would require an additional variance for that, the roof area.
Thank you.
Would these additional variances, do they have to be...
No, we always have the discretion, any variances that are identified during the hearing, there's a catch-all in the notice that gives that ability, and, you know, variances like this, if you feel it's necessary that the neighbors be re-noticed, that's always a possibility, but it is covered in the event that we want to grant it as a result of the hearing. Okay, so getting back to then the conditions, we do only, again, have C variances that we're dealing with, so four votes are required to approve the application. I have three conditions noted. First is our usual compliance with those conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum. Second is that stormwater management plans will be submitted to the board engineer for review and approval. And third, that the board shall retain stormwater jurisdiction for a period of two years after the completion of the improvements. And what that means is that if there are any stormwater issues at all that affect, you know, your property or the neighboring property, anyone can bring that issue up to the city, and you can be brought back before the board within that period to correct any defects or issues that result.
Thank you, Andy.
Pass one question. I have trouble, a little trouble hearing some of the discussion of variances besides what's noted in Ed's report. What are the new variances again, Andy, please?
So just also an air conditioning unit setback, which is proposed at the same five-foot value as the generator setback that is noted, and then we have the low-slope roof area being more than 20%, whereas only, it must meet the pitch requirements if it's more than that 20% figure.
Okay.
Any just clarification, please? Both AC units were within that five-foot setback?
It's two units.
The existing has been removed, which is not on the plan, it's saying it's determined?
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Got it.
Thank you, Jay. Who would like to begin our deliberation?
We did that one.
Great. I was there.
Mr. Feskins, please.
You guys are challenged with a very, very narrow but deep lot, so a lot of the variances that we're seeing here are really just based on the existing, you know, non-conformance. I think what you've designed here makes a lot more sense than where you were originally placing it. I wasn't here the day that the prior variances were approved. Aesthetically wise, this makes a lot of sense. The natural flow from the kitchen through the dining to the outside living space, the fact that you're very well screened with your neighbors, and that this is not visible from the street, I think any of the potential drawbacks are completely mitigated, and therefore I can support this.
Thank you.
I personally, I think that the work itself is fine. I am struggling with not having the stormwater plan, and I know that there's a condition of putting it before the engineer, but typically, we have that whole plan. The board is privy to the review process. We can also ask questions, and I feel like it's so much that is being done here, related, relevant to that, that I do really feel like that should have been part of our package, and that's the, that's the one thing I'm struggling with. I think the variances themselves, those are, for same reasons Mr. Feskins stated, those are not really an issue for me. I mean, it's a 60-foot wide lot, you are constrained, but the stormwater management, I personally would like to see that.
Is it possible to come back with that? Like, get this approved and come back to show you the, what we've all kind of agreed upon? I don't know if it's formal or informally.
There's, there's no variance connected to the stormwater, right?
Well, it's required, though.
It is required, but there's, you know, it's not necessarily tied to a variance, and typically, we wouldn't approve it, yeah, partially, and require a separate hearing. It seems to me that it would be an issue of either all or none, we bring the whole thing back and wait on the approval, or we can approve it subject, of course, to the condition that the plans be submitted, subject to board engineer's approval.
I mean, it's triggered by the 400 square feet, but then there's so much more stormwater work that's being done on the site, that...
No, I think you're going to have to decide if it's worth bringing it back or...
Yeah, I mean, I agree, but I, I'm more troubled by, like, you're here presenting the case, and there's a sump pump that you don't know what it does, and it's on the side of the property, and it's there.
Right.
Not a big deal, and I understand my co-ord's discussion about the drainage system. I mean, I can support the project the way it is, but the key thing is to make sure that you get a good civil engineer there and that the city approves whatever needs to be done with the, which you're required to do anyway, so...
Yes.
I'm not a drainage, I'm not a drainage expert, believe me, but when I went by the site today, and there's a sump pump sitting outside that's telling me, water has to move somewhere. Water's going somewhere, so that leads me back to backyard, where is there any water problems in that there that we don't know about? Because you're constructing, you're moving things around, so I can support the project the way it is, just got to get that engineer out there and make sure things are cool and steady.
Yeah, and I'll just add a comment about the stormwater. I mean, I agree with the concerns, but I think we often have conditions where it's subject to review by our engineer, and I don't see anything particularly unusual here that I don't think that that, I have a reasonable expectation that Marie will be able to review plans, and if it's okay, she can say it's okay. If it's not, we'll make changes. I don't see any reasons to not go with our standard, not standard, but our common condition where we leave it up to our engineer to review the stormwater plans, even though we don't have it tonight.
I'm definitely not doubting Marie's expertise in this area. However... However, I think that when we make those conditions, we typically have a pretty robust stormwater plan. And then in the conversation, some adjustments are made and different calculations, maybe they don't match, and then we say, okay, well, this has to get squared away. In this case, I really feel like we don't even have a stormwater management plan. So that's, this is something on paper that we basically were told to, you know, discard. So I do think it's different than in the other cases. And that's just, that's my opinion, so I'm not...
I would, I don't know if we can, for the record, maybe discard what was submitted because that's effectively what we're doing, right? Just so it's not even part of any approval. And if, you know, based on the variances and what you're asking for, I also can be supportive. But I feel like we're doing a little discovery here and just trying to fill in a bunch of blanks. But like, the variance is as is, as long as we have that stormwater condition, I can be supportive.
I think it's pretty understandable that 99 percent of the people living their daily lives don't have to deal with civil engineering issues, right? What bothers me a little bit, though, is this is your second time in front of the Board. So should be a little bit more familiar with what our expectations are and what is required to submit an application and get it approved. Despite my consternation over that, I do agree with Mr. Yuko that, given that the site is so flat and the solution for stormwater mitigation should be very straightforward, and we obviously have full confidence in Marie Raffaletto to let you guys know if you go astray. So with that, I'm willing to approve this project as submitted, provided that it meets the conditions that have been put in front of you. So with that, can we get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Jessica, can you call the roll, please?
Place chairs on?
No.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Mullay?
No.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Chairman Lakeits?
That is approved. Thank you.
I'm glad someone's keeping score.
Good luck.
Good luck. Make sure you do a good stormwater plan, please.
Please. And our final case of the evening, 20 Oxbow Lane.
Okay, hello again. I'm here with the applicant, Michael Cardone, owner of Cardone Contracting, and his engineer. We have as well Bill Hollows. This application really is limited to the rear yard for proposed patio and two-tier retaining wall with steps to go down to the next section of the property. As you can see from the plan I'm showing right now, and if I can, this is the only thing I promised that has not been submitted previously. It's an updated landscaping plan that was approved verbally by John Linson per his comments.
And we'll mark that as a one.
Thank you. It also shows the hashing is the steep, the regulated steep slopes on the property. The part that is not in hash marks is still pretty steeply sloped, it's just not regulated The only variance requested is disturbance of the steep slopes. It's about 5,100 square feet, where the property has 9,444 square feet of steep slopes total. That's really the gist of this application, and I don't want to over-explain anything. But if the Board has any questions of me before I turn to Mr. Cardone.
Board experts, do you want to wait for the engineer?
I'll wait.
Okay, great.
Board, do you have any questions for Samantha before we...
Public, any questions? Say none. Let's hear from your engineer.
Okay. Mike, you're good.
Thank you.
All right, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and spell your last name.
William Hollows, H-O-L-L-O-W-S.
And you two have appeared before us a number of times, including recently. Any changes to your credentials since the last time you were here?
No.
I imagine we will accept you back once again.
We will. Welcome. Please proceed.
I can show whichever plan you want. Tell me.
Why don't we go to the...
Mm-hmm. This proposed.
And basically...
Here you are.
What the applicant is... Oh, it doesn't work, yeah? Might not work. Oh! Different color. I don't know. I just wanted to see. Yeah, there is a teaching class. The tan area, the brown area, is the house that's under construction at this time. The driveway that we see towards the left side of the drawing is the existing driveway that went to a single-family house that was on the site prior to this construction of this new home. That house was removed, and this house is under construction. What the applicant is proposing to do are disturb the steep slopes kind of in that area in order to get some outside living space, proposing a patio in that area. And we're going from a garage under situation on the side to up to a patio to be on the first floor level. So that's where we have the steps going up along the side. Steps are in that area. We have steps going up. And the reason why, and then we have steps going to the, up towards the rear yard, and that's these steps in this area. Because when you get, if you've been to the property, when you get past the steep slopes that's right off of the proposed patio, the lot flattens out. And that's going to be the area where it's going to be some lawn back in that area, more of an outdoor living space. Actually, this property has like a ridge line here, and then everything from that point towards the house slopes towards the house. And then everything behind that line slopes, actually, that's towards the north or towards the neighbor's property. But that'll be, this will be a lawn area and a living space, you know, an outdoor living space, basically a place for children to go out and play and, you know, throw a ball around. Now, Mr. Cardone has been building homes in Summit for probably 25-plus years or doing renovations of homes, and he's well aware of the steep slope situation. And he's not going to disturb anything more than what he really needs. And we put that number down as 5,000 square feet, but it probably could be a little bit less than that. But he's going to keep it within, definitely within probably pretty much what I have outlined in the blue line that goes parallel to the back of the house. And then when you get to the rear yard, where it's saying that'll be the lawn or more of a outdoor living space for the families, it's not a steep slope area. So right now, it's kind of overgrowth, so it'd just be, that would be removed, be fine-grated and seeded, maybe a little bit of soil disturbance just to kind of flatten it a little bit better, make it smoother. Now, we won't be changing any drainage patterns. Everything, the majority of this property comes towards the house, and then it goes down towards Oxbow Lane. There's no more land disturbance at all in the front yard, and that was really pretty much just for utilities connections. Again, we're utilizing the same driveway, so it's really just this back area so we can build the patio. And, you know, we need some retaining walls in that area because of the steep slopes. We are, and I've had a discussion with Marie regarding the stormwater management system on this property. When we did the original grading plan for the building permit, we sized the drywall for just the increase in harvest coverage. Since I've had my discussion with Marie, and it was similar to the previous application where if you're going to put the roof leaders in from the whole house, size the drywells for the whole house. So that's what, we have to make revision to the plan, but that's what we'll do.
So you're basically going to have more capacity.
Right, we're going to have more capacity than what we're shown. So when we did the original plan, we had one drywall for the building permit. When we did this original plan, we had two drywells. Actually, I need one and a half. But taking in the whole house, which was going to create improved drainage for the neighborhood, I need two drywells, but I have to expand the gravel area around the drywells a little bit. Instead of 10 by 10, I need 11 by 11, and it'll take the roof leaders from the whole house into the drywall system. And also in my discussions with your consulting engineer, Marie, on this project, there's some housekeeping things that I need to add to the plan. And I have, we comply with basically all the comments that are in that letter. We went through the letter, and we can comply, some of them are just some clarifications on some line weights and some, you know, limited disturbance lines, that type of thing. Probably the biggest item that was in the review letter in our discussion that we had was that size the drywall system for the whole house. And then there was a comment that Mr. Linson had some comments, and we had taken sheet three, and we just put the additional landscaping that he was looking for onto that plan. I know there was comments from your planner that we need to screen the AC units, so we would have to add that to the plan also.
And that's on your other plan with the new landscaping, right?
No, that wasn't.
Okay.
That wasn't something I knew at the time.
That's all right.
But I, we would have to add some, mostly some kind of shrubs. And I think there was comments from your environmental people on the type of shrubs, and we will look into that as far as what we may need to change or from what we've selected so far. But we would look into that also in amendment plan accordingly.
Board experts, what questions do you have?
So Mr. Hollows said he and I had discussed, after he reviewed my letter, you know, I had a phone conversation about some of the details on his plans. We talked about the drywall. I don't see any problem with him just sizing the drywall to meet the roof collection. And if that were the case, it would be appropriately sized, but I'll make sure that I review it again as a condition of approval. And he and I had gone over some things, as he mentioned, housekeeping things. It was hard to tell like the line weight of, you know, which one was the limited disturbance, which one was the silt fence. So he agreed to take care of that so we can make sure that that's all delineated. If there's anything, any disturbance greater than 5,000 square feet, you're going to get a soil permit for that. Could you talk about the rear portion of the yard that you said that there's a ridge there in the back, and that you're going to move some shrubs, some vegetation? Will there be any, are there any trees in there, young trees?
No, there are no young trees back there. And I'm going to be drawing on the other, the ridge goes across, basically, it's almost the setback for the rear yard setback. It's kind of the ridge line where contours change the direction, they go in that direction. But it's really just overgrown, might have been grass at one time, it just hasn't been maintained. So it's just kind of overgrown, and with the rain, we just had it sort of kind of knocked down. I was there on Sunday, took a look at that after the rain that we had last Thursday. That's really, this would be the area that I had mentioned would be more, and there aren't any trees in that area, which would be a lawn, a lawn area.
Throw a ball.
Yeah. And that's why we're requesting the steps to get out, get through the steep slopes and then get out to an area where it can walk normally.
So those walls in there are to reduce the amount of disturbance to the steep slopes?
Correct.
Those are the only questions I had.
Regarding the walls that we were just talking about in that back area, would you have any screening landscaping or fencing to delineate the difference where you have walls higher than three feet?
Yeah, I mean, that's a code requirement. We either have to put landscaping, which would be like behind the retaining wall, and then this is where we show on that landscape plan where that was going to be occupied.
Okay.
Okay? But yeah, we would, I think it would look better with landscaping than it would with putting a fence there.
Yeah, especially if that's their backyard, of course. Any other, I think Mr. Linson's addressed, I guess, if you coordinated with him as far as there was a tree that was supposed to be placed or replaced on the property, because you coordinated that.
Yes, and they're happy to do, you know, a condition if that's needed. It will be approved by John Linson anyway as a replacement plan.
Okay. You addressed the air conditioning units that we were asking about. In that back area, it seems like you're maintaining somewhat of a modest-sized patio in that back area, and it's, you have no other alternative but to disturb that area. Would that be correct?
That's correct. I mean, we tried to make it so we did our least amount of disturbance to the steep slopes, but also get something of a good-sized patio, because it really isn't right off of the house, anything that you can utilize. It's not like the flat lot you were just talking about. This is, this goes up if you've been through this stuff.
I think what's unique about the property, too, is that it previously had a house on it, and the house has been replaced, but that you're situated the house in the same location and similar activities in that same location. It's not really changing the grades of the property substantially compared to what exists there.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Don't forget the question.
Great. Board, what questions do you have for this witness?
I have a question about the grading. In the, so it looks like, you know, in some ways, we're changing the grade in that back steep part perpendicular to like, we're shifting it 90 degrees, right? And so if you look at the southeast, well, if you look at the southeast corner, right now, it looks like it's, say, an elevation of 134 to maybe even 136 at the neighbors'. And then we're dropping that down to somewhere around like 130. I just, what happens on that, what happens on the border there, on the property border, where the neighbors might have a different elevation? How is that being addressed right here with the steep slopes? Because the direction of the grade is changing?
We're not changing the direction. I think I mentioned that we're not changing any...
On this right here, right, this is existing, on this, what is this? This is, what is this, sheet three of five? Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but this looks like the grade is, looks different on this plan than it does on this plan.
Well, you have to remember, the larger scale plan is not the whole property, it's really... It's really, has to do with more detail, more detail around the house. But when you get to the back, I said there was a ridge that went across the property and then the property slopes towards the neighbor. Well, actually, we are lower than our neighbors along the house. Until you get back to the, the rear corner, we're, we're lower than every, everyone around us.
I see, no, I see that this is just a portion of the backyard now. I was hoping if this, like this was the, the limit here. Okay.
Yeah, I just got a couple. So the proposed patio, was that included in the original building plans?
No.
No.
Why not?
Because it requires a variance. We wouldn't have been able to, right?
Speak up. Can you speak up a little bit louder?
We had something smaller. We were under the 1,000 square feet.
The house is compliant though.
The house is compliant.
It's been under construction.
If you're denied tonight, what do you do?
They can't have.
You just sell the house without a patio?
They can't have that patio. Yeah, right.
Because I'm a little troubled that this is kind of a back doorway to get this.
And let me just.
Am I allowed to say that?
Yeah, I'll just remind, that is the process, right? You know, they come here for a variance. If it's granted, they can do it. If it's not granted, they can't. And they knew that presumably in generating the original plans, and that's, that's why we're here, to weigh whether it makes sense or not.
I just, yeah, I'm, I'm troubled by the whole process. I understand we're supposed to just focus on this, but it's, it just seems like we're, we put the cart before the horse. And now we're being asked, proposed to approve something that leaves, if we don't approve it, it leaves people in a bad spot. If we do approve it, it becomes another one of those cases where we approve something after something's built. And I'm just not comfortable with that. So I'll leave it at that.
I have a question here.
Just make sure you're speaking into the microphone if you can.
We have, what's currently existing, just a level at 107 elevation. What's existing now is, this area is the, at elevation 107.95. Correct me if I'm wrong.
116 is what I'm seeing on the plan.
No.
The existing grade is approximately 116 behind, behind the house.
So it is, then, so, so this area here is, I mean, the dwelling, this wall is a kind of basement from the other side.
No.
I mean, there is some distance between this wall.
And 117. What's there in between currently?
It's just, there was a house there before and it's just, it's just brown.
It's kind of flat. And we're making now a patio at 117. So we're filling or what's, what's going to happen between the 107 and 117?
You've got to step back a couple of steps on that. The house has a garage under. So you come up the driveway, you go under the, you go in the garage on the basement level. So you, then you go up approximately 10 feet to finished floor of the house. We have a patio back there. We wanted to be able to walk out from the house onto the patio. We don't, we don't want to come out and go down a few steps and then go up more steps for the steep slopes. We're coming out a foot and a half higher than the existing ground law to match the finished floor of the house. So it all starts, pretty much starts with the elevation of the garage.
It would be helpful if I had the architectural drawings. I don't.
Yeah, this is really limited to the rear patio, right? And the two retaining walls to create that small area of flat space. And it's, it's limited to the request for steep slope disturbance over 15%.
I can see between these two areas here, 105 top. This is the finished floor.
Yes.
A kind of one-story difference. And it's a lot.
Yeah, that, that, they're working with the existing grade and, and that's why you see that, right? That's why they have the, the driveway, the cars go underneath, right? So they're working with the existing, exactly the way it was right now, and replace the house exactly where it was. So this is the, the minimum to just make a, a patio.
So are we doing any excavation or fill?
They have to regrade where the, the, that.
Little line is, right?
Could you explain where the fill and excavation going to take place?
Well, you're, you're going to, can you clear this?
Mm-hmm.
Really, the only fill we're, we're putting in, and it's, it's a minimal amount of fill is to, so that we can walk out of the house onto the patio, you know, at most six-inch step down to the patio.
So that's the fill. And where is the excavation?
There isn't any.
No excavation.
Not even for the stairs?
Well, there'd be, yeah, there'd be a little bit of excavation to get the stairs up to the patio. And then some excavation to construct the wall.
Do you know, does this house has a larger footprint than the previous house that was there, or you don't know?
It, the other house had a previous, it was one-story, so it was wide. This is a little box here. Not a whole lot, a whole lot of size difference, but it is a two-story house.
So the patio, you know, I was out there today and I guess I, I'm just picking up on what Mr. Malley was saying. So it looks like there's definitely a bit of fill that has to go under that patio to have the grade match where the doors are. Or a flight of stairs would have to come down, more than one step.
Yeah, there would be more than one step if you, but it kind of defeats the purpose because if you come out with steps from the house, then you've got to have more steps going to get back.
Right. So it's a couple feet potentially that are being filled in the back to get that patio to.
Yeah, because it goes from 115, looks like 115 to 117.
Yeah, looks like a couple, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Not seeing any. Questions from the audience? Seeing none?
He is our last witness, unless you would like to hear from the applicant.
Does the board want to hear from the applicant? I'm not seeing a ground swell for that. So if there's anything you want to say.
Oh, that's it. This is really limited to, like I said, the steep slope disturbance for about 5,100 square feet to create that patio with the steps and the steps to the rear yard.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ball.
So once again, we're only dealing with C variance for the steep slope. Four votes are required to approve the application. I do have three conditions noted. First is our usual compliance with the conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum. Second is that revised stormwater management plans shall be submitted to board engineer for, for review and approval. And third, that the landscaping plan shall be submitted to the city forester for review and approval.
Okay. Who would like to begin?
I'll start.
Go ahead. Mr. Curran.
Yeah, I mean, being out there today, I, I can't imagine how you would disturb less than I think what's being asked for in trying to access the flat space in the, in the rear yard. And I think, you know, improved drainage for the neighborhood, making this usable lot for a family, outdoor space in the, in the flat backyard. I can, I can support this.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Being out there today and looking at the lot, it troubles me that, I know we're supposed to concentrate on the steep slope and the stairs and the patio. That should, in my opinion, all of that should have been included in the original application for this property. It may have resulted in a different design of the structure so that less steep slope would be disturbed, and different plans could have been looked at. We're kind of stuck right now. I think this board is stuck. Because if you don't approve it, our builder here is stuck with a house that he has to go back to the drawing plans for the outside. In either case, he has to disturb steep slope. I'm not comfortable with the process of how this happens. I think the process needs to be more upfront with the building department and us. I, I hate to say this, but I cannot support this project only because of the way things were handled. And I don't know if that's okay.
So I, just keep in, keep in mind your role, right? It's not to address the procedure of how the applications come before you. Your role is to weigh, you know, the positive and the negative criteria, see what the benefits being asserted by this application are and/or the hardship proposed by the lot. And against that, you have to weigh any detriments that are presented to the surrounding properties. So that, that is your basis of how you're to consider and vote on the application. The procedure itself behind it should not come into your.
Correct. Yeah, you're right. You brought me back into line. I'm still struggling with it. I'm going to hold my opinion right now. It's fine.
Who else?
Well, I was out there today and, I mean, there's, there's really no usable space behind this house without disturbing that steep slope. And, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see any negative impact to the neighbors. I, I, I would, I would approve this.
I guess I'd like to note that a lot of these steep slopes have already been disturbed. So there's sort of no going back and undisturbing them, I mean, even rebuilding them, which doesn't necessarily mean that we should approve it. I'm not saying that. It's more to.
But they haven't been disturbed here. This isn't, I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, but this is in the case right where they've, they've been stopped.
Well, some are in that, I'm not saying it was stopped. I'm saying some of them have already been disturbed for the construction, having walked through the backyard. Some of the area where the patio is, this is already, you know, it's already disturbed.
But is that a steep slope area?
I think it was a steep slope area. This is, we're not seeing it anymore. This, all of the backyard was steep slope. So where the patio is going along the house, that's, you know, it was excavated probably part of construction, but some of this area that we're seeing has already been excavated. That said, and I, and so I, you know, just saying that to Mr. Nelson's point, I, I don't, also don't like the come-in after. However, I will say that I agree with Mr. Chanchouli that without putting, you know, without allowing for a patio here and allowing for these steps, this is a backyard that has zero function and probably zero safety for a family in terms of if you have, you know, presumably children living in this house, you, you need to make that backyard a little bit accessible to them. So with that, I, I could approve this or support it, I should say, not approve.
Chairman, may I? Please. After listening to other testimonies that, you know, kind of brought me back to my senses. But again, it's, it's, I don't want to dwell on it, but we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. So I can support this project now. I just hope in the future that people pay attention to what we're trying to say. Thank you, Mr. Nelson, for that. Can we get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Give a second.
Second.
Vice chairs on?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Chairman Lake it?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. We do have a resolution for more realization, sorry. 80 Elm Street, zoning board application number ZB-25-2291. The eligible members to vote are vice chairs on, Mr. Yuko, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Curran, Mr. Chanchouli, and Mr. Nearing. Could we get a motion?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Vice chairs on?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchouli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Thank you. And there are no minutes tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
We're meeting next Monday?
Yes. We have a meeting next Monday?
Yes.
Who wants that?
Yes, regularly scheduled meeting.
November 10th is the second November meeting.
Did we get a second?
Do we have a second to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it a meeting next week and one week after also?
No, next week and then we're off for Thanksgiving. An extended Thanksgiving break.
Look, if you guys want to get together on Thanksgiving, make it out. I'm in California.
Some turkey and.
Some tur, turkey and zoning.
Applefish.
All those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.